Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Eileen Dandero-Foley City Council Chambers for this, the public hearing and presentation on the budget for April 15th, 2009. You're all most welcome. Before I hand it over to the city manager, I will be talking about what the rules are and how we conduct the public hearing after the presentation by city and school and police and fire. And with that, we'll turn it over to the city manager, and they will begin with the presentation. First, however, I need to ensure that we call the role for the city councilors, and if the city clerk would please do that.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayburn.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Hetmanik.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Thank you, your honor. Before I get started with the presentation this evening, just a couple of housekeeping matters. We're going to be having some slides up here, and I believe everybody was able to get a copy of a handout as you came in, but if you didn't, just raise your hand, and Andrew or Gail will give you a copy. So if you don't have one and you want one, you'll be able to get that from Andrew. Also, we figure the presentation portion of the budget hearing tonight will be about 40 minutes. It's going to include myself, the police chief, fire chief, and superintendent of schools, so bear with us. It's been a very challenging budget. We want to make sure you get all the information that you possibly can before you are able to make comments. Tonight's public hearing is on the proposed fiscal year 2010 budget, which covers expenditures for all city services, including schools, police, fire, recreation, library, public works, and other municipal departments for the period of July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010. In accordance with Article 7 of the city charter, I formally submitted the budget to the city council on April 10. The fiscal '10 budget is presented amid an extremely difficult economy that has affected the entire nation. Although Portsmouth is weathering the financial crisis better than most communities, the city council has been sensitive to its impact on individual citizens and set a goal of no increase in the overall tax rate. However, the challenge of meeting this goal is complicated by four major developments related to the declining economy. The first is Governor Lynch proposed a state budget that would eliminate shared revenue, which translates into a loss of revenue for Portsmouth of about $657,000. Two, the proposed Rockingham County budget reflects a 4% increase in the amount of local taxes required to be raised by municipalities, which will increase Portsmouth's county obligation. That's about $200,000 more. Three, the dramatic drop in car and truck sales has led to a projected $250,000 reduction in estimated city revenues for motor vehicle registrations. And four, the city anticipates an additional $250,000 loss of revenue due to the rapid decline in average interest earned from investments. Due to the loss of the revenues, the increase in the Rockingham County budget, and the overall economy that directly affects our citizens, the city council requested that all departments endeavor to submit budgets with no increase for fiscal '09. While the municipal and fire departments submitted proposed budgets that met this goal, the police and school departments did not. And as last Monday night, the police commission met, and you can see up on the chart that is on the screen and that you have, that originally there looked like there was going to be a $124,000 increase. The police commission, when they meet with the city council on April 29, will recommend that that come down by $84,000. So there will be a correspondence reduction in that budget. And the police chief will go into that further when he makes his presentation, and so will Dr. Lister when he makes his. As a result of these factors, the tax rate would increase by 30 cents to $17.28 if the city council adopts this budget as proposed. And as I indicated, if the police department budget comes down, that would be an additional reduction of 2 cents to 28 cents. Without all these factors, this proposed budget would not have required an increase in the tax rate from fiscal year 2009. In developing their budget requests, departments were forced to make difficult choices in order to attempt the council's budget goal. The FY '10 budget process would have been even more difficult in the current lean economy if the city of Portsmouth had not previously invested a substantial amount of time and effort in adopting policies to improve our fiscal stability, address long-term liabilities, and limit the impact from external financial conditions. These include, but are not limited to, the creation of a fund balance ordinance, a leave at termination fund, a health insurance stabilization fund, a capital improvement plan, and a rolling stock replacement program. As a result of these efforts, the city's bond rating is now at its highest level ever after Moody's Investor Services upgraded the city's bond rating another notch to AA2 last June to make it equal to the AA rating reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's. Both bond rating agencies cited the city's strong financial management, healthy fund balance, and low overall debt burden as positive factors. Not only has the high bond rating resulted in substantial annual savings to our taxpayers in the form of reduced borrowing costs, the city also is able to avoid the requirement to obtain bond insurance that faces many other municipalities struggling in this economy. The budget that I present is submitted to you as requested by each department. This proposed fiscal year 2010 general fund is approximately $84.7 million, or 2.8% increase over '09. The total budget is comprised of $68.9 million in the operating budget and $15.9 million in the non-operating budget. The operating budget of $68.9 million finances expenditures associated with the day-to-day operations and services provided by municipal, police, fire, and school departments, and represents an increase of $1.9 million over fiscal '09. The non-operating budget of $15.8 million consists of expenditures for debt service, overlay, capital outlay, county tax, contingency tax anticipation notes, and other non-operating expenditures, and represents an increase of $351,000 over fiscal '09. The fiscal '10 proposed budget has been carefully prepared to allow the continuation of critical services and improvements to our infrastructure. The city of Portsmouth is fortunate that although departments were required to submit a budget with no new positions, departments were not forced to lay off any full-time personnel. Overall, the total full-time position count for this budget represents a net reduction of 7.2 positions, and if the police department budget is reduced further, there'll be a total of 9.7 positions, which was primarily accomplished by reallocation of resources and not filling some of the vacant positions in other departments. One major area of cost, of course, is salaries. All city services are labor-intensive, so it's not surprising that our personnel costs comprise 83% of the operating budget. For the second consecutive year, the budget was developed without final approval of 14 collective borrowing agreements that expired on June 30, 2008. With the exception of the school department's approved contract with its teachers, departments submitted budget requests without cost-of-living adjustments for the remaining 14 contracts employing firefighters, police officers, and other municipal staff. Although contracts have expired, departments included step increases for employees who have not reached top step in their job classifications in accordance with current contracts. Until the remaining 14 contracts have been negotiated and approved by the city council, I can only anticipate what the potential negotiated impact associated with salaries and benefits would be for each department. Last fiscal year, the budget included an appropriation of $1 million in a separate line item for collective borrowing agreements. When the teacher's contract was approved, $550,000 was reallocated from this contingency line to the school department, leaving $450,000 in this appropriation. As we head into the second year without contracts, the rollout effect for fiscal year 2010 is anticipated to total approximately $1.5 million, that $450,000 plus $1,530,000 for anticipated increases. Therefore, similar to last year, I'm recommending appropriating the additional $1,530,000 in a separate line item within the operating budget that would reserve funds until such time as contracts are approved. Another major cost area is retirement. The New Hampshire retirement system has announced an increase in the contribution rates for all city full-time employees for fiscal '10. And on the chart on the screen and that you have in front of you, it gives the breakdown of those increases, which substantially affect our budget. In addition, as salaries increase, so does the city's share of retirement contributions. In fiscal '10, the total amount appropriated for retirement exceeded $3.4 million, an additional $290,000 over fiscal '09. Retirement now comprises 5% of the total operating budget. It's important to note that this increase does not include retirement impacts associated with salary adjustments, which have yet to be negotiated. Another area is health insurance. Health insurance costs continue to grow and impact the operating budget substantially. The New Hampshire Local Government Center Health Trust has provided the city with a health insurance guaranteed maximum rate of 16.5% over last year, which will result in a total premium cost of approximately $12.1 million. City employee's share will be approximately $2.1 million, or 18% of total costs, leaving the city's share to almost $10 million. The Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, established in fiscal year 2002, allows for departments to annually budget the average growth in the health insurance rates established by the LGC over the prior 10 years. Fiscal '10, the average is about 11.5%. However, this increase still impacts the operating budget by more than $982,000, as shown on the chart on the screen. Other costs include operating costs as utilities, building and equipment repairs and maintenance, contracted services, special needs tuition, and transportation, which make up 17% of the operating budget. Although the city continues to make every effort in our public bidding process to obtain the best prices for materials and services, market forces still dictate energy, material, and contracted labor costs. Another area which we do not have control is the county taxes. City of Portsmouth has annually assessed its portion of the Rockingham County budget based on its share of the equalization of property values for Rockingham County. This year, the Rockingham delegation adopted a budget that increased the amount of local taxes required to be raised by municipalities by 4%. However, the actual tax obligation for the city, which is determined by the Department of Revenue, is not set until sometime in October prior to the setting of the city's tax rate. Therefore, we can only estimate that Portsmouth will pay in excess of $3.8 million next year, and that's $200,000 approximately over last year. A vital part of our budget is capital outlay. In difficult economic circumstances, it's important to remember the role of local government in continuing to provide services that maintain quality of life, such as our library, schools, public safety, public services, and recreation opportunities for our citizens. While maintaining these services, we cannot neglect or reverse the progress we've made over the last several years on the city's infrastructure. In the past, the planning board has recommended annual appropriations of between $1 million and $1.5 million from the general fund for capital projects. This year, due to the continuing negative impacts on the economy and the nation, the resulting need is to reduce municipal expenditures wherever possible. The planning board recommends expenditure of $800,000. Although this will slow our rate of infrastructure improvements, we must continue to schedule maintenance of streets and sidewalks to avoid greater costs in the future. The $800,000 represents a decrease of about $235,000 from fiscal '09. However, this amount, combined with grants, stimulus funds, matching funds, and other programs, is still sufficient to support ongoing projects and to initiate those that are most needed. In addition, I've made reductions in the amount requested in our rolling stock program. However, we must be cognizant that the delays of vehicle replacements may result in increased costs in repairs and maintenance. Now, this concludes the overview on the proposed fiscal operating and non-operating expenditures. After the presentations from the school, fire, and police departments, I'll continue with an overview of revenues and the proposed tax rate. This time, I'd like to have the police chief come forward, Michael Magnet, to talk about his department. Chief?
Thank you. I always appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about your police department. I'd like to briefly touch upon some of the different services that we provide, about our calls for service, some of the things that have helped to make us an award-winning police department, and then, of course, we'll talk about our budget. Our number-one goal is to provide an environment in which crime and disorder do not flourish, one where people can feel safe, both in their homes and also in public spaces. We do this very successfully through a philosophy that we first adopted in 1987, philosophy called community-oriented policing. It's one that is grounded in the belief that we, the people, are part of our community and that we must work in partnership with those we serve. It is highly work-intensive for law enforcement. The goal is to ensure that we combat problems and their infancy before they evolve into serious crimes and disorder. Now, a real quick snapshot of some of our numbers. You can see that we handled 38,000 calls for service, and also, as you can see, we made close to 1,500 arrests last year. 147 were for felony-level crimes; over 100 were for drugs or narcotics. I'd like to direct your attention to the upper right-hand corner of this slide. As you can see, the average daily vehicle count for some of our streets, Lafayette Road, over 22,000 vehicles. This means that on any given day, on Lafayette Road, 22,000 cars have gone down it. On Maplewood Avenue, over 10,000. On Islington Street, almost 20,000 cars. Elwin Road, 8,500 vehicles. These numbers never cease to amaze me. The simple math here is over 60,000 cars travel on these city streets on any given day. These numbers reflect people coming to town to work, to visit, to shop. That's the 65,000 number, service population number, that we talked about each and every year. And given these numbers, I'd like to highlight our success in the area of traffic safety. Traffic enforcement is up almost 60%. Property damage accidents in our city are down 4%, and personal injury accidents are down 43% from 120 to 69. We have now gone nine years without an alcohol-related motor vehicle fatality, and since the year 2000, our alcohol-related crashes are down 71% from 52 to 15. 71%. And that's in a city that has the most liquor licenses per capita than any other city in the state of New Hampshire. Yet alcohol continues to drive a lot of what we do. It was a factor in 40% of all of our arrests last year. I'd like to draw your attention to the map of the homeless camps in the upper right-hand corner. Two years ago, I warned that police departments had become the caregivers of last resort to the chronically homeless population, many of who are mentally ill and addicted to drugs and alcohol. I express my conviction that we have a duty of care for these people, but that they don't belong in the criminal justice system. And I'm now pleased to report to you that the Portsmouth Mental Health Court became a reality in 2008 after many hours and much hard work. Approximately a dozen people have already been diverted from the criminal justice system into the community healthcare system. I've talked about the necessity of specially-trained officers for many areas of police work, and we now have two officers, Officer Christine Meyer and Officer David Keveney, who are trained as crisis intervention officers with expertise in the area of dealing with the mentally ill. Our Bureau of Investigative Services consists of several divisions: general investigations, family services, our special investigations unit, the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, our school resource officers. Our detectives have been busy with the thefts of precious metals, commercial burglaries, robberies, and computer-related crime. We recently got a conviction in the heroin overdose case that received notoriety in the media as the Red Sox potty death. We also arrested several people who are responsible for over 30 commercial burglaries within our area. The presence of sex offenders in our neighborhoods is a reality. We currently have over 39 registered offenders. We are vigilant about keeping tabs on each and every one. A new law passed last year requires them to register with the police department more frequently, which in turn requires us to commit the necessary detective resources to make sure that this happens. If they don't register, we track them down. I referred earlier to the number of arrests where alcohol was a factor, and a survey conducted in 2007, nearly half of our high school students reported that they had been binge-drinking within 30 days prior to the survey. Well over half had reported some use of alcohol within the month prior to the survey. We're very active in this area. Research shows that a combination of aggressive enforcement and education works best. To that end, we work with the schools to conduct a number of prevention and education programs. We also conduct alcohol compliance checks frequently to ensure that retailers don't sell to minors. And I'm happy to report that we've seen our compliance rate improve from 80% to 96%. How can one live in New Hampshire and not talk about the weather? Our work is not just about crime. When natural disaster strikes, it affects everyone. Whether it's a flood or an ice storm, the families of police, fire, and city employees are affected, along with the general population. During the recent ice storm, our officers, your firefighters, and other city employees were also, without heat, without running water, without power, their cellars were flooding, yet they left their homes and they left their families to serve and protect you and your families. And they did an outstanding job responding to crisis after crisis, some for 36 hours straight. Within the police department, everyone from the top on down jumped into cruises and patrolled and answered calls. Even our Explorer cadets were involved, providing security at the shelter. Not one single burglary took place during that time, even though without electricity, scores of homes and businesses in Portsmouth were vulnerable. In 2008, we had our very first successful citizen police academy, which was totally funded by Crime Stopers. As I speak, we are in the midst of our second academy, which filled to capacity within a matter of weeks. Our Explorer cadet post took the 2008 Post of the Year Award. They also received an award from Special Olympics for their volunteerism with these athletes. Last year, we, meaning the police department and the community, celebrated 25 years of participating in National Night Out, and this is a national event designed to get people out of their homes and connected with their neighbors and the police to help keep their neighborhood safe. Captain Janet Champlin received the Woman in Law Enforcement Award from Roger Williams University. Lieutenant Mike Schwartz received the Red Cross Heroes Award for talking to distraught individuals out of jumping from the high-level bridge. Officer Scott Pearl was recognized as the 2008 K-9 Handler of the Year, and the Portsmouth Police Department also received a national award from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency for our work in combating underage drinking. And now for the budget. When we first constructed our budget, one of the initial things we did was put together a level-service-funded budget. In other words, what would we need to provide the same level of service next fiscal year as this fiscal year with no new programs or no new personnel? And as you can see, that figure was called for a 3.15% increase, or $271,643. And you can see from this slide that a majority of the increases were in areas that we had very little control over: retirement, healthcare, and workers' compensation. However, the police commission wanted to get as close to the city council's goal of a 0% increase. With that in mind, we went to work and went into the budget to try to find areas where we could save money. We were provided with an opportunity because our IT manager was retiring, and we had heard from the council last year that we should consider consolidating functions. So we worked with the city manager to consolidate our IT function with the city, and that resulted in a savings to the police department of a little over $44,000. Another area we looked at was reducing our full-time animal control officer to a part-time animal control officer. And we knew that this is risky because it will generate complaints. It's perhaps one of the busiest persons in the police department. She does everything from cleaning up roadkill on the street to investigating dog bites to rabies complaints. But still, we felt that we had to find areas where we needed to make a cut. We cut the church traffic assignment, something that we have been doing since 1955. We also eliminated a part-time youth advocate position, which was vacant. However, at the time, we had been working with the school department and the United Way, hoping to leverage this money with some grant money to hire a underage drinking coalition coordinator, but we cut that from the budget. We reduced our overtime expense by over $43,000, and still, we're 1.45% above the 0% target, a little over $124,000. And this is the budget that was submitted to the city manager and the city council. However, in light of the governor's budget, which further pushed more costs down to the local government, the commission asked to meet again and to take a look at finding ways to reduce the police department's budget. And we did that last Monday. However, we had a new wrinkle, in that the school department, in their work to try to achieve a 0% budget, had reduced their funding for the elementary school resource officer, which meant that another $35,000 had been placed back into the police department budget, which now meant we had to find almost $160,000 in order to get to 0%. With that in mind, we cut the National Night Out program. We reduced our Explorer program by $2,000. We reduced our car seat safety program by $2,000. Reduced our training by over $11,000. We also cut three auxiliary police officer positions. We cut a full-time dispatcher position, and we didn't fund a full-time police officer position. And that brought us down to less than half a percent, over 0, of $40,787. And at this time, I'll be working with the city manager between now and when the commission meets with the council to try to find ways to reduce it even further. But in closing, let me say that this has been a long and very difficult budget process. I think it's fair to say that this revised budget is not resoundingly endorsed by the members of the police department or by me. But we understand the economic situation that we all find ourselves in today. We sought to streamline our operations and prudently reduce personnel to curtail our fiscal burden. We have highlighted a number of challenges we face in policing the city. The men and women of the Portsmouth Police Department are committed to ensuring that Portsmouth's reputation as a premier city to live in, to work in, to visit, continues to be maintained, no matter what the future holds. Thank you very much. I'd now like to bring up the fire chief, Chris Leclerc.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, residents. I'd like to talk tonight about the fire department budget fiscal year 2010 and some of the services that are offered by your fire department. First and foremost is fire prevention. Our Fire Prevention Bureau deals with code enforcement, plans review for new construction and renovations, public education, both in our nursing homes and in our elementary schools and at middle school level. Our fire Our fire suppression division, structural fires, transportation fires, marine fires out on the water. And our emergency medical services provides advanced life support through two full-time-staffed ambulances and a third ambulance that's not manned. Hazards and materials incidents are handled by the fire department, part of our regional start team. Handle any spills, any ruptures, any unknown substance, white powder calls, all of that comes our way. Our fire boat with marine responses, both fire suppression on the river and the ocean, search and rescue calls, and also hazardous material spills on the water. Through our annual volume of calls, ours is split basically fifty-fifty between fire responses and emergency medical service responses. Our fire activity for 2008, this graph shows, is split up into different categories, including twenty-two structured fires, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven hazards conditions, over a thousand rescues, and so on. EMS patient conditions, out of our 2,334 ambulance calls for last year, this gives you a breakdown on how they were found. And seventy-five percent of those were transported to local-area hospitals, twenty-five percent not transported. Our ambulance revenues continue to rise through the years as we do bill all patients that are transported to the hospital. Last year, calendar year, about a $560,000 revenue brought in by the ambulance. Again, our Fire Prevention and Inspection Division, we have over one-hundred-and-eighty-five place-of-assembly inspections, including the bars and restaurants the police chief talked about, many other inspections for Life Safety Code, many public education events, again, plans review for new construction and renovations, and forty-eight investigations. Fiscal year 2010 goals, I'm happy to say, as of this morning, they started moving the earth at 3,000 Lafayette Road for the new fire station, number two. We will need to maintain our minimum shift staffing of thirteen, continue our infrastructure improvements, both in our buildings and our apparatus and equipment, and again, maintain a lead role in regional responses to special hazards and maritime operations. Our annual budget for fiscal year 2010 was proposed at zero percent. And again, this is a 2.3% reduction. In other words, a 2.3% increase would have been needed to meet fixed costs, the costs that we have no control over. But we were, even though the fire department budget is extremely tight, the fire commission and the staff was committed to coming in at zero percent. And the budget maintains minimum staffing of thirteen thirteen. What I mean by that is thirteen firefighters during the day, thirteen firefighters at night. Couple of years back, we were fourteen and fourteen. In the past year's budget, we tried to maintain fourteen firefighters at night, and we short-staffed during the day down to thirteen. This budget, it's thirteen all the time, and that is our number. That is minimum manning on the trucks. We're still well below national standards, but for us to do what we do and provide the same services, that's as low as we can go. Again, the men and women of the Portsmouth Fire Department are very proud of the service they provide and are totally committed to providing the same level of services that we have in past years, regardless of budget constraints. At this time, I'd like to introduce Superintendent of Schools, Bob Lister.
Thank you, Chief Leclerc. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Behanko, Mayor Forini, members of the City Council, citizens sitting in the room. I'd like to acknowledge the school staff and the parents and the administrators that are here as well. I'm here to talk briefly about the Portsmouth School Department, which I'm very proud to do and always honored to do. These are some guiding budget principles that we have. The first is delivering a personalized education, and what that means is providing a quality education for all students, regardless of their needs. Maintaining reasonable class sizes. It's very obvious that students learn better in small class sizes, and we want to keep the class sizes as manageable and reasonable as possible so all kids can learn. We want to focus on core subjects, so students are competitive in the work world later on and competitive when they start applying for colleges and going on to other schooling. We need to respond to state and federal mandates, which include No Child Left Behind, IDEA, which is special education, the GLEs and the GSEs, which are standards that we have for students in the schools, the minimum standards from the state, course competencies, and follow the Child Program, which is a result of Dr. Tracy, who was the Commissioner of Education, who we really want to follow all children and be able to make sure that they're getting the things that they need. We need to implement the 21st-century technology, because many students are coming to the schools today with knowledge of technology far beyond sometimes what we can provide, and we want to make sure that we're able to provide technology, not only in academics, but in the arts and other areas as well. And certainly, we want to drive towards a zero-budget goal, which has been difficult, even though a zero percent with the school department represents a reduction in the operating budget. I just want to emphasize the quality education for all students, the reasonable class size, maintaining reasonable class sizes, and certainly, our recruiting, training, and retaining the best teachers and support staff for our children in the schools. Accomplishments and performance measures, which is accountability, which we're all accountable. Our state assessments, which is the kneecap, we score above the state average. In grades three through eight and grade eleven, the kneecap, which is our state testing, we are above in reading, math, and writing. Although no dropout rate is acceptable, we have one of the lowest dropout rates in the state of New Hampshire, which is 1.6%, or seventeen students. Two years ago, we were at thirty-two students. So we're providing programs and intervention strategies for students in schools to keep them in school, and many of these seventeen students that are represented here do return to school at some point to either receive a GED or come back to school or get other school programs that allow them to be successful. We have, the SAT scores are above state and national averages. We have some, the graduating classes applying and being accepted to great colleges, state colleges, Ivy League colleges, and we're very proud of that. We have common power standards in reading and math, which are more standards to be able to evaluate how students are doing and be able to provide interventions in the programs that they need to be able to be competent readers and mathematicians. We have common assessments of student learning. We're developing common assessments in the classrooms all the time that we want students to be able to be successful. We are involved in collaborative work focused on interventions. I'd like to also add that I feel as though we're pretty successful working with SAU50, which is the towns of Greenland, Rye, Newton, and Newcastle, as those students come to the high school, because one-third of the students at the high school come from those towns. So it's very important and very prudent for us to work with that, with SAU50, the Superintendent, Dr. George Cushing, and the school boards to make sure that our students are successful as well. We have many prevention and education programs, and obviously, there's not enough time to talk about those this evening, but we also look at our programs and talk about the three As: academics, athletics, and the arts. Because we have a very strong arts community, we have a very strong athletic community, and certainly, academics are important as well. I'd also like to recognize, as some of our accomplishments, the recognition received by our students and our staff for excellence in lots of different areas. Some identifying challenges that we have, like other departments. A challenge is to maintain quality program and absorb fixed increases, and you've heard about health insurance, wages, and other items that we have little control over. And with an attention to zero-budget increase, zero-percent budget increase is a goal. Rising class sizes. Portsmouth Middle School, world languages. Portsmouth High School, world languages. The question is, do we want our children to be able to speak other languages or not? Portsmouth Middle School, grade seven, is a bubble. We have bubbles throughout the school system that we have to address, and we're always shifting and moving our resources. And certainly, of the three elementary schools, New Franklin, Donidero, and Little Harbor. Little Harbor School is very crowded, and we have some issues with the number of students that are there as well. Special education and English as a second language. Fourteen percent of our students are identified as special education in many different areas, with medical, academic, and other difficulties. We have forty ESL students who speak eighteen languages in our schools. Another challenge is the technology integration. Not that we don't do it, we want to do more. And the maintenance cycle for the equipment, so our children have the best equipment that they can so they can move forward. Certainly, student mobility is an issue in the Portsmouth School Department. At some points, we have thirty percent of our students come and go during the school year. That takes a toll on teachers in the classroom and just the whole influx of students and the students who leave. We have a homeless population that's increasing all the time, and we're always working to shift our resources to where the needs of the students are and streamline services as best we can and work with the city in different areas to coordinate services as well. The budget requests that we're making, you see here, salaries of $20 million, benefits, contracted services, those are people that are not on contracts, but we contract out for their services. Equipment, the total is a $36 million budget that you saw in Mr. Behanko's introduction. The percent increase with the teacher's contract, which is 1.6, is 2.2%. The net increase that we're asking for this year is six-tenths of a percent above the zero, and that's so we don't have to lay anybody off. We're really trying the best we can not to look at the budget so we have to let teachers go, and so we want to be able to have the same staff because the numbers of students is not changing. And just to finish up, I'd just like to say, there are a lot of things that we can't talk about tonight because we just don't have the time, but I'm looking forward to, and the school board, who are also, members are also in the room, are looking forward to the work session next week with the city council to be able to talk more about the Portsmouth School Department and how proud we are of the students and the staff in the city. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager, Mr. Behanko.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Dr. Lister. Property taxes remain the city's major source of funding for services provided by the schools, police, fire, and municipal departments. And as you can see on this chart that's up on the screen, seventy-six percent of all our revenues come from property taxes, or $64.5 million. If the total budget is adopted as proposed, it will result in an overall tax rate of $17.28 or 30 cents over the tax rate, or 1.7% over FY09. And as the chief described, the police chief described, that the police commission has reduced the budget down, which actually would bring this 30 cents down to 28 cents. And if you can, you see that the loss of state revenue accounts for about 21 cents of the increase, along with the county tax increase of $200,000. The remaining, which would be now seven cents, is between the police and school departments. Municipal department came in below last year, and as the fire chief indicated, the fire department came in equal to fiscal '09. One area that really has been frustrating as we've been building this budget over the last few months is the continual uncertainty on our revenues. That has probably, this year, been one of the most biggest frustrations with the, working with the finance department and the other departments, because these external factors have affected the fiscal ten tax rate, and most of them are on the revenue side. Many of the departments have been working diligently to try to bring down expenditures. But the first area is revenue sharing. The governor and the legislature has eliminated revenue sharing to municipalities, and that costs us $657,000 on our revenue side. That means we need to make that up by adding 18 cents to our tax rate. Originally, the state budget had included an additional cut of $921,000 on our meals and rooms tax. But luckily, the stimulus funds that are coming in can be used to be redistributed at the discretion of the governor, and he has, within the budget, asked that that be restored, and the House has restored that in the meals and rooms, so that we did budget the $921,000 for our revenue for meals and rooms. Motor vehicles, as I indicated earlier, we are probably going to see about a $250,000 reduction in our motor vehicle funds that we collect on our registrations. Investment income is down $250,000. One area that I'm very concerned with is the school building aid. In 2002, we bonded the high school project and were promised by the state a million-dollar building aid annually, which comes in when we pay our bonds. The House passed a budget that did not include prior-year school building aid, and there are a number of reasons for that that I won't go into tonight, but that is a potential problem for us in the budget. I did budget the million dollars on the revenue side, but as the city council starts deliberating the budget over the next few weeks, we're hopeful that the Senate, who now has received the budget from the House, will reinstate that building aid, which affects municipalities across the state. It's about $83 million in prior funding that has been promised. And again, the county tax, $197,000 over last year. So what we were dealing with this year has been about $3.3 million in uncertainties and external factors. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the departments, given the challenges that we had, because on the expenditure side, I think we've been able to get real close to our goals. If it wasn't for these external factors, actually, I'd be standing here tonight indicating to you and the city council that we would probably have a no-tax increase. But that isn't the case, and I know over the next few weeks, the city council is going to be working to, with the departments. On April 22nd, we have a work session with the school department. On the 23rd, we have a work session with all the municipal departments. On the 29th, it's police and fire. And you'll see on the agenda tonight that the mayor, at the end of the public comment session, will be recessing the public hearing, and that will be on May 11th. The city council will reopen the public hearing, so after all their work over these couple of weeks, you'll be able to come back and speak to the issues that they have been trying to address over that time, either the reductions or adjustments in budgets. And hopefully, by that time, we'll have a better understanding as to what's happening with the state budget, which will make our lives a lot easier. In any event, the city council must, by June 30th, adopt a budget. That is by charter. If they do not adopt the budget, the budget that I presented this evening becomes law. And I suspect that that will get done, but I just wanted to let everybody know what the procedure would be, and typically, we have adopted the budget in the first or second Mondays in June. At this time, what I'd like to do is turn the public hearing back to the mayor to open it up for comment, and I want to take this opportunity to thank all of those department heads that have worked closely with us, and specifically, the finance department, who again, has won the distinguished budget award. It's a national award. We're the only ones in New Hampshire that have this award. Takes a lot of work, but it's worth it, because if you're able to go online and look at the budget, there's a lot of information in there that I think will help you understand some of the challenges that we have. Your Honor?
First, as John gets back up here and people get rearranged, I want to thank the city manager, the chief of police, the fire chief, and superintendent of schools for their fine presentations and their hard work in getting to this point. No one takes for granted, on the city council, certainly, no one takes for granted the hard work that everyone in the departments has engaged in, and we appreciate that it has been difficult. I think the city manager did a fine job explaining the greater context of where our budget is this year, which is decidedly different than we have experienced in previous years. So tonight, we go forward with the public hearing on the budget, and again, it will be recessed at the end of this meeting so that people can have an opportunity to observe the process and comment once again before we go to a final vote. I need to explain the rules for the public hearing so that everyone understands what it is we can do and what the rules are for speaking. First, there are three rounds to the public hearing, three rounds of speaking, so everyone goes to speak in the first round, and if I see no one else get up to speak, I will then close the first round, call the second round, and I'll do the same with the third. There is no prohibition against speaking if you've already spoken once and you have another brilliant thought that you want to bring to us. We're happy to hear it, and we ask you to just step up in the second or third round. Please remember also that there is no time limit on what it is that you bring to us this evening in your comments, and because of that, while you certainly can speak as long as you wish, we would ask that you be considerate of the many other individuals who are here wishing to comment on the budget and their concerns in that regard. Additionally, if there are comments that go beyond the scope of the budget, while it is not my nature or inclination, I will have to remind the speaker to stay on point with regard to the budget. I must tell you that on occasion, that does happen, and I ask you all to be patient in that regard. Finally, this is not a dialogue in Finally, this is not a dialogue in the sense that you ask us questions and we answer them here in this format. It's pretty unwieldy, and frankly, we'd be here for, for days if that were the case. However, if you do have questions, and many of you may, we will keep track of those, and I would ask that you afford us the additional courtesy of asking either the city manager, myself, the appropriate department head, if there's a question you want to get answered, connect with us after the fact, and we'll do the best we can to ensure that you get that question answered. And with that, if no one has any other offering at this time, we'll go forward with the public hearing. I'll open it, and I would ask you to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and then proceed with your comments. So at this, I will open the public hearing. And you may want to line up rather than wait. It speeds the process along. One other thing I get to say, now that people are lining up, which is a good thing, is if you are here with individuals who have a similar point of view, consider, while it's certainly not requested, please consider having one person speak for the ten people or twenty or thirty or wherever, or have a few people speak, and have your other friends rise and support, and that's certainly an effective way to graphically demonstrate to us the individuals who are here supporting an issue or point of view. And I'd ask you to consider that. So I think we're ready to go. I think our first speaker, Mr. O'Leary.
Good evening, Mayor Farini, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John O'Leary, and I reside at fifty Nathaniel Drive in Portsmouth. I'm a member of the library trustees, and I'm here this evening to speak to the library budget. I would like to first point out that in keeping with the direction from the city council, the requested library budget for fiscal year two thousand and ten is slightly below the amount budgeted for this current year. This is being accomplished without a reduction in hours of service or a reduction in personnel. The savings that make this possible are primarily the result of efficiencies in the utility systems, efficiencies in library technology and library systems, creative staffing adjustments, and a reduction in the materials budget. The library staff has provided the council with an outline of services and objectives, and I will not detail these at this time, but I would like to highlight a couple of points that I hope you will find of interest. Even when the library was located on Islington Street, the utilization numbers were impressive. Since the move to the current location, these numbers have increased. A comparison of the estimated numbers for the current period with the most recent comparable statewide utilization numbers that are available finds that our visits per capita are two-point-nine times the state average and two-point-three-six times the average of New Hampshire urban libraries, that is, libraries serving a community of over eighteen-thousand people. The comparative numbers for material circulations are two-point-nine times the state average and two-point-four times the average of New Hampshire urban libraries. Our library is a very valuable and highly utilized resource. I would also like to point out that this budget is only forty-thousand dollars more than was budgeted two years ago for fiscal year two thousand and eight. It should be noted that since that time, the library has expanded hours to include being open on Sundays for all but the summer months, is offering additional services, and is servicing the needs of more residents. If you've been to the library on Sunday afternoon, you know how well the public has embraced the idea of being open on Sunday. We know that in difficult economic times, the use of many library services tends to increase. As an example, people look to the library for more cost-effective entertainment choices. Individuals also use the library to check online job postings and use library resources to assist them in their job search, such as composing resumes and cover letters, as well as researching prospective employers. Through careful attention to the needs of our residents, we believe that we can continue to offer the citizens of Portsmouth high-quality services with the requested budget amount. I would like to thank the library director, Mary Ann List, and her excellent staff for the work that they do throughout the year, and especially for the effort that went into preparing this budget. I would request that you approve the library budget as submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Next speaker, please. Name and address.
Nancy Winthrop, five-seventy-nine Sagamore Avenue, and I'm here in four capacities tonight. First, as a retired school principal, I want to remind everyone, as it was pointed out to us tonight, that when we, that we cut the budget every time we level fund it, so I ask you, please accept the presented school budget. As a realtor, I need to emphasize how important good schools are to the value of our homes, and therefore, please accept the presented budget by the school department. As a grandmother of students in the Portsmouth school system, I say there's no room for cuts in this school budget. Please accept the presented budget. And as a senior citizen, let me remind my fellow elders that the children we educate today will be those we depend on in our golden years, so please, accept the school budget as presented. Thank you.
Please step forward and state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Farini, city manager Bohenko, and city council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Scott McKee, and I live at one-fifty-one Lafayette Road in Portsmouth. My son Nathan is a third grader at Little Harbor School, and like every parent with a child in our public school system, I would naturally, naturally like for him to get a, the best possible education. I don't imagine that anybody in this room would deny that that's a worthy goal. Certainly, no one among us would want our legacy to be that we were the generation that presided over the failure of the public school system in Portsmouth. But as a parent volunteer who spends anywhere from thirty to forty hours every week, nearly every week, throughout the school year, helping out in my son's school, and who has been volunteering there extensively for the past eight years, dating from when my stepdaughters attended, and as one of the current volunteer coordinators at Little Harbor, helping to organize over one-hundred parents who are putting in an astonishing number of hours to assist the staff there, it is my view that our schools are at a tipping point. And along with a large number of grassroots concerned citizens here tonight, I am here to ask you to revisit the funding formulas in order to begin to reverse this trend and support the school budget that's been requested by Dr. Lister. I have been an eyewitness to the fact that regressive funding over the past five years has resulted in increasing student-to-teacher ratios in our classrooms, the loss of essential paraprofessional support, the elimination of language arts curriculum at the elementary level, decreased field trip funding, and the loss or reduction of numerous other enrichment programs. The funding drain has also contributed to a mounting frustration, frustration among our exceptional educators, who are finding it necessary to spend an inordinate amount of time on behavior management in their overcrowded classrooms when what they want and need to be doing is teaching our children. If my bleak observations seem excessive to the members of the council, I would humbly and respectfully request that you spend an entire week volunteering in one of our elementary schools day-long. I am confident, if you do that, that you will gain an appreciation for the extraordinary job our educators, administrators, and parents are doing to try to hold together an underfunded system. Now, as taxpayers, we all appreciate the tremendous pressure that is exerted on the city council at budget time, and in this recessionary cycle, your task is monumental. But in our view, the long-term consequences of a short-sighted approach that values across the board, budget freezes over the hard work of redefining funding priorities, will most certainly be vastly more expensive to the taxpayers of this city in the long run. The price any community place, pays for a failed school system is well-documented and measurable, including the inability to attract high-tech business and foster entrepreneurship, increased numbers of families in need of public assistance, higher unemployment rates in healthcare costs, increased drug abuse among our children, and soaring crime rates and a myriad of other associated problems. So while we may save a nickel today, the real cost to Portsmouth taxpayers will become very steep going forward. In our view, it will take more than an accountant's narrow focus to find solutions to our current fiscal difficulties. It will take vision, leadership, and the political courage to stand up to those who make the spurious argument that since only a certain percentage of the city's taxpayers have children in the school system at any given time, the rest should therefore not be asked nor expected to pay the tab for adequately funding our schools. Improved signage for tourists on our downtown streets, expensive brick sidewalks, and tree replacement in public access areas are part of what helps give our city its beauty and charm, but we strongly believe that the true character of a city is measured by how well it prepares its children to become thinking, responsible, and educated citizens who grow up to make a positive contribution to their community. If for no other reason than that, it is critical that each one of us does everything in our power to reverse the decline in our city's schools. So we are here to ask two things of the city council tonight. Most immediately, we ask that you please rethink and rework the funding formulas and support the point-six-four percent increase. But as our elected representatives, we think it's equally important that you become strong advocates and activists on behalf of our slipping school system, not only locally, but also at the state and federal level. Please take that on as a signature cause of your term of office. Thriving, successful, and dynamic cities make education their number-one priority, not just in good times, but most especially in difficult times. That is simply good policy. Every one of us who values education in Portsmouth offers our full support if you will commit to stepping up to this challenge. And I'd like to conclude by thanking all council members for your service to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Just, I would like to ask this. I, I know that there are going to be many speeches such as that, that are going to move people to, to want to respond with applause and so forth, and, and that's fine, but in the interest of moving it forward, I just ask that you take into consideration that the line is going to be long and that many need to speak. If you please.
Okay. Honored, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Martin Cameron, four-sixty-nine Ocean Road. First thing I want to say is that I got a call from Bill St. Laurent early the other this evening, and he's, can't make it. He's feeling pretty punk, real sick. I think he'll recover, but it just wasn't a good idea to come down. First of all, I want to thank all of those people engaged in the budget process, the commissioners, the school boards, the department heads, council members, and so forth, everybody involved in the process. It's a tough, tough, hard job, and I guess a year like this makes it even tougher. It's, when the jobs are flowing, money's flowing, it's a lot simpler. But we all know how the economy is, lousy. So, jobs are down, bankruptcies are up, and we, we know the, we know the outcome of that. So I won't belabor that, and I won't, I think everybody's, like I said, done a good job so far on cutting down the budget, and especially in light of the cuts we're getting from the state, which is really, really hurting and killing us real, real bad. But there's one point I just want to bring out, and that is, even if the budget, the tax rate were to be at sixteen ninety-eight, what, what we're doing is going, using the sixteen ninety-eight at a piece of property that is now worth a lot less. Like what I'm getting at, if it were three-hundred thousand a couple of years ago, it certainly has to be, you couldn't get near that now. It'd be anywhere from, what, maybe three percent, maybe ten percent, somewheres in between. So, we're paying more for a piece of property that's worth less. And we also, I want the councilors to keep that in mind, so it's not, even, even as bad as it is, even at sixteen ninety-eight, we're still getting hit pretty hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Ardito, and these are my daughters Isabel and Olivia. I live at one-seventy-one Park Street in Portsmouth. I wanted to thank you once again for this open forum. You'll have to excuse my clogged-up voice, I've caught the flu, but I did want to inform the council members tonight that it's in your own best interest to agree with everything I say, or I'll come over there and sneeze on you. I'm kidding. Not really, but. I was trying to rack my brain and think about what else to say in favor of our school system, and thinking about what we can do together to give our children what they need. I sadly found that, yes, indeed, each day, my brain cells function less and less, and my mommy brain has taken over. I came up blank. I had all but given up, as my thought process was leading me to start comparing this budget crisis to giving birth, and then the clouds cleared all at once with someone else's voice on the radio. I was listening to NPR, or half-listening, as I've come to be able to do these days with kids yelling in the backseat, but the Reverend Jesse Jackson's booming voice snapped me to attention. He was saying something remarkable, remarkable in its simplicity and purpose. He said, "What we need to do is look at the world not through a keyhole, but through a doorway." Let me say that again. What we need to do is look at the world not through a keyhole, but through a doorway." Inspiration hit, because that is indeed what we need to do here. The numbers will be near impossible to crunch and to work through, sleepless nights will happen, things will inevitably get lost, but if we do indeed look through that doorway, that will enable us to see not just our current course, but the footsteps of the future. Portsmouth is what it is for a combination of reasons. For example, there are many lovely places in the world boasting of gorgeous beaches, but they don't have the community, they don't have the neighborhoods, they don't have the schools. We are a delicate ecosystem that is threatened to topple in many areas, not just one. Let's say some don't feel it's a priority, what happens to the little ones of the Portsmouth school system. Do you care about your property value? Do you care about Portsmouth thriving, people moving their businesses here? We are what we are because of all that we possess in this little mosaic of our little seaside city. That our children are blossoming within our school system is a gift, a blessing to our community, one that should not be squandered, but should be protected, nourished, and held near. Let's face it, we are a city that has been short-sighted in the past. One needs only to look at how we have lost our way with not valuing our shared history by looking at the parade mall. The wrecking ball took more than just wood and concrete when we destroyed those close-knit neighborhoods all those years ago. We took a vital fabric from our city. It is not far-fetched to see similar recklessness happening within our school system, not because we don't care, not because of those of you aren't valuing the school system, but because perhaps with swirling fear and unrest around us, we forget. We start seeing things through that keyhole and not a door. We have much to be proud of in Portsmouth, in the ways that count, in the ways that matter. We are still a place that looks in on each other, that shovels that walkway for our neighbor. I'm simply asking that we remember with grace and pride why we are that place and where our heart lies. It should be with our children. They need us to tend to them like seedlings. We need to guide, we need to give them the tools to move through their lives. Let's indeed be the community that gets it. Let us be splashed across a glossy magazine cover that says "The Little City That Could", "The Little City By The Sea That Took Care Of Its Children." Let us widen our gaze up from that keyhole and on to an open door. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lisa Lisbon. I live at thirty-seven Taft Road, and I'm here to encourage you to vote for the school budget in the amount that has been proposed. Just a short version, I think, of what some of the other people have been saying. I noticed today in my online city newsletter that the city of Portsmouth has been mentioned in Business Week. I don't remember the exact reason, but I do remember the reasons within Business Week they listed, and one of them, one of the first two or three that jumped right out at me, was our excellent school system. And I encourage you to consider that, the same as many other people have been saying and probably will continue to say tonight, that the schools are a major factor in what makes Portsmouth what it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, city councilors, Mayor Farini, city manager Bohenko. My name is Jennifer Bell. I live at four-hundred F.W. Hartford Drive, and my children attend on Darrow Elementary. Hartford Drive, and my children attend Don Darrow Elementary. Tonight, I am urging you to vote for the .64% increase in the school budget, because you care about the future of the city of Portsmouth. We should all be asking ourselves, what do we want Portsmouth to look like in five years, 10 years? Our answer should be, we want it to be the city with the finest school system in New Hampshire. If we don't put money into the schools, we risk the deterioration of the entire city. All across America, the towns that are thriving are the ones with the best schools. Money Magazine rated Hanover, New Hampshire, just two hours north of us, the second-best place to live in the entire country. This is based a great deal on a stellar school system that offers foreign language starting in the 4th grade, an environmental habitat studies program beginning with the 1st grade, that involves hands-on science investigation, collection of data, using technology and math skills to organize data, and eventually, learning to form and test new hypotheses. Right in the Hanover city's master plan, it states, "The Hanover schools are considered by many to be among the best in the area, making Hanover a desirable place for families." The public school system is an important thread of the social fabric of the community. Not only do the schools serve as a gathering place for students and their families, but the schools are an expression of the community's vision for the future. As a parent, I spend countless hours each day reading to my children, talking with my children, exposing them to the arts, history, science, math, world culture. They are my treasures, and I will continue to do everything in my power to teach them, help them grow physically, emotionally, and intellectually. I think that Portsmouth City Council should approach the school system in the same way as parents treat their children: nurture it, guide it, and help it to be the best that it can possibly be. This community has some of the most gifted and highly skilled teachers, some of the most caring and involved parents. With all of this potential, please give us what we need to make the schools great, like they are in the thriving towns across the United States. Please don't miss this opportunity to put money into the schools and bring Portsmouth to a new level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Erica Taylor, and I live at 205 Odeon Point Road. I have three children who attend Little Harbor School, and I'm the PTA Vice President there. I think we all agree that funding public education must be a priority and is an investment in the future of our community. Parents and other members of our community have shown great commitment to the school system and has raised thousands of dollars each year to enrich our children's education, to provide field trips and books for the classroom. But what we can't do is provide for additional teachers in the classroom to maintain the acceptable student-teacher ratios. Only we can do that by voting for the school budget as submitted by the school board, and I urge you to do that. Thank you so much for your time and service, and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Carol Chelman. I live at 430 Richards Avenue, and I want to thank Dr. Lister for his presentation tonight. I am in support of the school department's budget, the .64% increase. I agree with some other speakers tonight that we are at a tipping point in Portsmouth. I think our schools are not doing as well as we might like to think they're doing. We are lagging behind in technology. We have lost enrichment programs like foreign language. Our equipment and our books are out of date. Our schools are crumbling. We really are not in a good situation here in Portsmouth right now. And I think that the City Council needs to focus on some long-term decisions, not short-term decisions. 0% budget is a short-term decision. What we really need is a long-term decision. Those are much harder to make, takes longer to see the benefit of what you've done, but it's what our community really needs. We need you to invest in our children's education and make a long-term decision. I think we need to be very careful during these economic times that we're in, that in our zeal to cut budgets, we don't dig ourselves into a hole that we can't get out of. The budget request from the school department is entirely reasonable, and given the state of the schools, it is at a bare minimum what is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Rick Condon. I live at 141 Madison Street here in Portsmouth. I'm also president of the Firefighters Union Local 1313, and I rise before you tonight. I'd like to ask you to support the recommendations of the fire chief and the fire commission concerning the 2010 budget. When the fire chief first presented a 0% budget increase, I was pretty concerned about the statements that came out in the paper saying that he'd have to drop down from 13 firefighters on duty down to 12, if not lower. I was worried about this, because as the chief mentioned back in November of 2007, the minimum manning fell from 14 firefighters on duty down to 13. At that time, the department was able to maintain its current services with the reduced staffing. 13 firefighters, as you know, was the absolute minimum needed to run the department with two engines, two ambulances, and one ladder truck. Anything less than 13 would require that equipment and manpower be taken off the road and decisions made there. This is important for the safety of not only the public during an emergency, but also for the safety of the firefighters performing the work, whether it means that an extra ambulance is not available for injured firefighters at a fire, or one of the fire engines is not staffed appropriately when we do have a fire. After several discussions with the chief and the commission, they assured me they could find room in the fiscal year 2010 budget for a 0% increase and still maintain the 13 firefighters on duty. As the chief mentioned, even at 13 firefighters, we are still well below minimum standards set forth in national guidelines. I was also very encouraged to read the city manager's proposed budget, and one of his top goals was firefighter safety. His budget also reflects the wishes of the City Council for a 0% budget increase and maintains the 13 firefighters on duty. As the labor leader representing the firefighters, I really should be up here advocating to meet or even exceed the minimum standards for staffing, and I'm pretty confident at some point I'll probably be up here asking for just that increase. However, in these extremely difficult economic times, and with the chief's and fire commission's assurances on staffing, I'm going to support the 0% budget increase in maintaining 13 firefighters on duty, and I ask the City Council and the mayor to adopt the same proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Valerie Fagan. I live on 75 Gates Street, and I'm speaking today as a taxpayer, a citizen, and most important as a mom of a high school student. President Obama has indicated that our children must be able to compete in a global environment. Budget cuts in our education system have made it difficult for teachers to have updated materials that help to ensure that our students have the ability to be prepared to compete. The high school presently is working with books that are 10 years old, so I'm asking you today to please support the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Step right up.
Hi, I'm Emmy Adams. I live at 6 Nixon Park. After hearing Jen Bell talk about Hanover, New Hampshire, I am a very proud resident of Portsmouth, but I am a little embarrassed. I'm here to support the increase to the school budget for 2010, and as mentioned earlier, this increase is still a 2% decrease to last year's budget. And because the funding of our schools have been in a steady decline for many years, the effects are not only noticeable, but staggering if one is interested enough to notice. We may not be able to change what is happening today, but we need to stop cutting this budget and look to our future. I stand here tonight because this is not the first year that the schools have been asked to take a cut, but it is the first year that my family has been personally affected by one. Last year, Don Darrow lost two teaching positions, and in doing so, both of my girls lost a teacher in their respective grades. And after back-to-back cuts, excuse me, after back-to-back years of staff cuts, the effects have become quite noticeable. The class sizes have grown to uncomfortable numbers for the space and resources available, the day-to-day services have been delayed or reduced, and teachers have been asked to do more with less. They are overwhelmed, and so are the kids. We've been told by some in the community to not use personal experience to communicate these trends, because it may make you, the council, uncomfortable. This is an uncomfortable time for everyone, but change does not come from being comfortable, nor does it come from ignoring the facts. Here are just a few to remind the mix of community members here tonight of just what is happening to our schools. As a city, we consistently and continually rely on the donations from parents and teachers to provide: colored pencils, markers, crayons, glue, glue sticks, liquid soap, hand sanitizer gel, and paper towels. We donate tissues, wipes, Ziploc bags, napkins, disinfectant spray, books, binders, bins, snacks, drinks, gift cards, and even dry eraser markers for the whiteboards. We are in need of recess equipment, board games, puzzles, stickers, and basic art and craft supplies. On top of this, the schools fund raise multiple thousands of dollars annually to fund art and music programs, environmental camps, and class trips. Further money is raised for bus rentals, technology initiatives, and miscellaneous grade-level events, and additional supplies, books, and programs too long to list here tonight. The high school is using a depleted source of novels for their literature classes. Math teachers are sharing 25 graphing calculators and 10 extra scientific calculators between 40-plus students per period. There are no exploring math textbooks, and not even a complete set of physics books. We are missing astronomy, oceanography, and national disaster textbooks. The chemistry and bio books need to be replaced, and the AP bio books should be replaced. Algebra I and Algebra B, Formal Geometry, Applied Algebra II, Algebra II, and Calculus are using textbooks older than 10 years old. We even have a textbook in our school district that is copyrighted in 1991. For easy math, that's 18 years, with a world map missing some 20 countries on it. We have class sizes that are too big, and teachers that don't have adequate support structures in place to assist them with the children either in need or those that should be challenged. We have teachers and administrators frustrated daily because they know that they are not delivering the education they should to the most of their students. And we have children that cry or feign illness with the thought of having to go into a classroom where their needs are not being met. The kids and these teachers are the ones that are uncomfortable, not for as long as I am here speaking, or for as long as this meeting may drag on, but every day. I am here tonight not to request that you fund these issues, but rather to maintain these deficiencies. We are asking for a tax rate increase of less than $45 annually on a $300,000 house, or more simply put, a sacrifice of one lunch out in a restaurant for a family of four, or two for the senior couple per year. Please support the school budget. Thank you for your time. I've also been asked...
Thank you.
Here's a copy of the map I referenced.
Thanks. If you care to submit that into the record.
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. Hear me okay? My name is Jennifer Godro, and I live on 5 Marjory Street. I am speaking for myself and my husband on behalf of our son, who is a 1st grader at Don Darrow Elementary, and on behalf of my daughter, who will start kindergarten in 2010. My primary concern is that there be no further teaching position or education program cuts, and that there be a plan in place to return the two positions lost last year at Don Darrow, which have made overcrowded 2nd and 4th grades this year. I would like to highlight some class-size research done in 2003 that summarized all the class-size research done on public schools since 1950. These federally-funded studies recommended that class sizes in the elementary grades should be a ratio of 15 to 1 for optimum learning to take place. A ratio of 15 to 1 makes sense to me when I consider that teachers today are given the task of teaching to children of all abilities in the same class. It used to be that children were separated by test scores, and this system had its faults. Many talented students with low test scores were overlooked or improperly placed. The current system looks more at the benefits of a class of diverse learners but poses teaching challenges. When I was in public elementary school, we were taught in a didactic form, where we sat at our desks and were obedient. Disruptive kids were given breaks at the principal's office to keep the class in order. Now, the learning environment is much more dynamic, and teachers are skilled at teaching the entire group, along with providing individualized assessment and instruction to each student. I praise our teachers who have a challenging task. The article that I mentioned from 2003 that I have a copy of to submit, found small class size coupled with good teaching produced more positive outcomes in reading and math, especially at the elementary level, and especially if small class size remains in place for a couple of years. It further stated that an important outcome was the finding that the greatest gains in achievement were found in students taught in classes of 15 or less. It emphasized that teachers named lowering class size more than any other factor as the one improvement that would create better teaching morale and job satisfaction. They found attention rates increased for students as class size decreased. Increased attention span meant less time waiting for help or causing disturbances in the classroom. Teachers saw improvements in the behavior of students, increased productivity, and more hands-on learning. One study showed teachers spent up to twice as much time per student in the reduced class sizes. In summary, the article states that the president of the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching has laid out a four-point plan to assure children are educated to their full potential, which includes reducing class size to no more than 15 students per teacher for early elementary grades. In addition, the National Association of Elementary School Principals' Delegate Assembly, NAESP, revised their class-size policy statement from 20 to 1 to 15 to 1. Don Darrow and other schools in Portsmouth used to meet this criteria, but it no longer does, and rather than accept this as our current fate, I would like to see us respond and reduce class sizes. While I cannot speak to all the details of the budget issues facing us, we cannot short-change our children with further cuts. What I present to you and what we as a community want to communicate is our priorities, especially for our elementary-age children. I am also advocating on behalf of the teachers, whom I've found to be talented and dedicated, but I'm concerned will become frustrated with this school system if we don't address this. I want them to know that we as a community are in support of their classrooms and keeping them small so they can more effectively practice their craft of teaching in today's system. While it may be unrealistic to stick to an exact number, if we have a goal of 15 to 1, then we have a starting point. If the goal is 20 to 1, then 25 becomes okay. If it is 25, then 30 becomes okay. We need to accept to the claims of these studies paid for with our tax dollars, and at least aim for their goal of 15 to 1 in the elementary grades in Portsmouth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Brown, and I live at 288 Washington Road in Rye. I'm here tonight as the parent of two children who attend Portsmouth High School. They are thriving and successful due to the wonderful educations and relationships they have with their teachers there. I'm also a 4th and 5th grade teacher at Newington Public School. Many of my former students are also strong contributors to the PHS community. Tonight, I represent both sending towns of Newington and Rye. As an educator and a parent, I ask that you please support the .64% increase in the proposed school budget. Quality instruction is of great importance to me. A 3.9% increase in the budget equates to level funding, so a .64% increase represents a cut in funding to our schools. Superior instruction comes from dedicated, quality teachers. We will continue to attract excellent teachers if they feel that the community supports them and supports their programming. Teachers love to teach because they love to learn. As a teacher, professional development is imperative if we are going to continue to provide the programming that will help our children compete in the future. Further cuts in the budget will result in a reduction in teacher training. Reductions in teacher training will negatively impact instruction in Portsmouth. I'm asking you tonight to please support the .64% increase in the school budget.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Susie Green. I live at 88 Union Street in Portsmouth. I'm the divorced mother of a kindergartner at Little Harbor School, and I'll have a kindergartner coming in in September, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. The driving force behind people's choice to live or move somewhere is the reputation of the school system. And I remember during a PTA meeting once, Principal Robin Burdick had mentioned one day that a man from the Midwest wanted a tour of the school based on what he saw from a website called GreatSchools.net. He had come from the Midwest and saw Portsmouth had an 8 out of 10. And it's an important school. It is important that a school maintains its resources as one of the biggest... It's important that the school maintains its resources. And it's the level of parental support, I think, that has given Portsmouth schools that kind of reputation. And volunteer parents every day swarm Little Harbor campus, and people care deeply there. And most recently, a spaghetti dinner and auction where 1,000 dinner plates were filled generated over $12,000. And there's no question that parents are doing their part. We fully understand and accept that you have to give to get. We don't sit back in our chairs and expect the money to roll in. We work hard for our kids, and we hope that the city and the taxpayers recognize this. And after all, it is much more than a child that comes to Portsmouth to be in the school system. It's the whole family. We work and live and spend money here. The whole community benefits by the adults and children connected to the schools. As a former pharmaceutical sales rep for 11 years, I've had the chance to live and travel throughout New Hampshire, and over and over I've seen people say Portsmouth is a great place. It's the envy of the state. It's proximity to the ocean, the beauty, the school system, the arts, the restaurants, the stores, all contribute to a destination spot. And people here are seen as progressive, and inherently, we're leaders, or we should be. be. The cross-section of people here is important. We have older people and younger people. Everyone's involved. It's a very civic-minded group who value the community and try hard to preserve it. And to maintain excellence in education in Portsmouth schools means everything to the kids, the parents, and the entire population of Portsmouth, and I hope you support the tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Step right up.
Good evening. My name is Janine Moran. I live at four oh one Greenleaf Ave. I have two children at Don Darrow School. My oldest is ten. When he started kindergarten, he was in a class of eleven students. One teacher, one paraprofessional. At that time, there were four kindergarten classes. In first grade, there were also four classes. They shared two paraprofessionals between them. My child's class size consisted of twelve children. In third grade, we were down a teacher, and the classes got larger. My child's class was eighteen kids with one paraprofessional. Then we got to fourth grade. My child is in a class that currently has twenty-four children. One teacher, no paraprofessional. We lost a teaching position because it was decided that one of the other schools needed it more. My question is, why do we have to choose which school needs a teaching position more than another? Why in this city, where we pay so much in taxes, is there not enough money to hire the teachers that are necessary? The teachers we have are very good at their jobs. That's not the issue. The issue is that our schools have been consistently taking the hit from budget cuts for years. I've heard people in this room at other meetings say, "When I was a kid, we had thirty kids in a class, and I turned out fine." But times have changed, and this is a different world than when we were kids...excuse me, kids. We now have children in classrooms that have challenges that couldn't have been imagined when some of us were in school. Our teachers are dealing with a wide variety of learning needs, and large class sizes are not making their jobs any easier. I know that there will always be budget cuts, but if we want our school system to continue to attract people to our town, something needs to be done before our test scores get lower and our reputation as a good school system is gone for good. Please support the proposed increase to the school budget.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Sally Zwick, and I live at two twenty F W Hartford Drive. Over the past few years, our schools have slowly lost teaching and paraprofessional positions. This past year has really shown the ramifications of those cuts. Our teachers are expected to give a personalized education to children within a wide range of academic levels in overcrowded classrooms alone. Math is where you can clearly see the effects of this. Math is a very challenging subject, and almost every kid has at least one question on every lesson, and many children need one-on-one help to get through the most basic of lessons. There are children who are struggling every step of the way, along with children who finish the entire lesson within minutes, and then, in their boredom, go on to create havoc. We've been making do in all of our elementary schools this year in part to parent volunteers. Although that sounds nice, and we truly are blessed to have so many willing parents, in actuality, that is just a Band-Aid. It's not sustainable. How are our teachers supposed to give each child a personalized education when the most basic of support structures is not in place to assist them? Sadly, I fear that by volunteering and assisting our teachers in their attempt to deliver a quality education, we are sending a bad message, and that message is that's working. It's not. Larger class sizes and less support staff is not working. Please support a budget increase for our schools so that it won't mean more cuts to our classrooms.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Suddy, and I live at four eighty-five Lincoln Ave. And I'm here tonight in support of the point-six-four percent increase of the school budget. Now, there are so many things I love about Portsmouth, and I'll start off by recognizing the police department and the fire department for their performance during the ice storm. My neighborhood firsthand received your services, and I'll never forget you guys being out there at two AM in the morning assuring people safety, and that made me very proud to be a resident of this city. I love the downtown development plan. I love our facilities like the public pool. I think our trash pickup system and our recycling center is best in class, and I thank you for all of that. But unfortunately, I have few thanks for the current state of education here in Portsmouth. I find it baffling that a city that takes so much pride in itself could let the schools deteriorate the way they have. And there will be some who will tell you that everything's fine and everything's okay, but I assure you that it is not. I don't believe it's okay when we sit back and watch bordering towns surpass us when it comes to things like foreign languages and grammar schools, computer science, penmanship. I don't think that's okay. You heard about the twenty-year-old textbooks. I'm not sure if you heard that there's not enough of them for kids to take home and do their homework. Instead, they photocopy the pages they need, and they take those pages home. I don't believe that it's okay that one of our schools doesn't even have a sprinkler system to fight off a fire if one should break out, but maybe that's okay because the school's made out of asbestos anyway, and asbestos doesn't burn. You heard about the volunteering, about parents being constantly asked to bring things like wipes, paper towels, markers, and number-two pencils so that kids can take tests. It's constant. These are just a few small examples of some things that are causing us not just to fall behind, but to fall down. I thought the city of Portsmouth was one of leadership and of one of higher standards. I believe we must stop the bleeding now. This is no time to sweep our educational issues underneath the rug. We must confront them head-on. I believe that education needs a long-term strategic plan that we continuously evaluate. And we must stop this watercooler chatter where people are saying, "Yeah, Portsmouth, great place to live, but the schools are suspect." That type of chatter does not help anyone in this city. If you have the wisdom to increase spending for education, you will have the support. Because if there's one thing that holds true about the people of Portsmouth, is that when things go in the wrong direction, we will organize to respond. And when it comes to protecting our children, we will rally with passion. We want our children to have a good education so they have the same opportunity as anybody else to succeed. So maybe someday, they come back here and open up their own business. Maybe they come back here and work for that top-notch police department, or become part of that fire department that protected people during that ice storm. Or maybe at the very least, they come back and say, "I went to school in Portsmouth, and I am very proud of that." Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. Mayor Farino, City Manager Bohenko. My name is John Bouchard. My wife and I live at one fifty F W Hartford Drive, and we have two children in the Portsmouth School District. I am here tonight to ask you to pass the proposed budget that the school board has put in front of you. I have followed the budget process for the last eight years. In every year, we seem to cut something. Well, city councilors, it's time to stop the cutting. We need to put our education system back on track. As you know, when something is cut, it never seems to come back to the education system. We need to invest in technology, textbooks, and programs in our school systems. I also ask you to look at the classroom sizes, and what do you see is a reasonable classroom size? At the point we're at now in some of our classrooms, it's not fair to the teachers or the students of how high the numbers have gotten. Please take a hard look at this budget and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Mergen. I'm employed at Portsmouth High School, and I'm the co-president of the Portsmouth Association of Clericals and Education Union. I live at forty-one Nightingale Lane in Elliott, Maine. We would like to ask that the school budget be passed as presented, even though the clerical union has made concessions to the budget with the loss of one and a half clerical positions. This is in addition to the loss of three positions over the last two fiscal years totaling in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Even with the loss of one full-time and one half-time position within our unit, we support the two thousand and ten school budget as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step up to the microphone.
Hi. My name is Monique Turner. I live at ten twenty Woodbury Avenue, and I have three children who all graduated from Portsmouth schools. I thought that they got an excellent education, they've done well in college, and I'm here to support the budget as presented by Dr. Lister. And I know maybe things have gotten a lot worse, but I was very happy with the education that my kids got in the Portsmouth schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Schwartz. I'm at one sixty-one Wallace Road in Rye. And thank you, Mayor Farino and councilors, for allowing me to speak and the city manager. I just want to make a brief comment. As a school board member in our town, and also as a parent of school-aged children, I won't reiterate all the comments about the ramifications of cuts to the schools or the importance of high-quality schools in terms of the overall town, the overall city, and quality of the overall city. What I do want to do is bring us two things that I don't think have been mentioned. One is to remind you that every dollar cut from your school budget also reduces the revenue that you receive on the revenue side. So for instance, a high school budget cut of one dollar is going to reduce the revenue from a third of your students which come from other towns, the revenue side of your equation, too. So realize that it's harder to cut, and the cuts in terms of reducing your tax dollars in the town are going to have a larger impact on the cuts in terms of the students at the high school. The other thing to consider is that I believe, at least in our high school, in our eighth grade, in our junior high, eighth grade is our largest of our three grades in our junior high. And I also believe that in the high school, the twelfth grade is one of the smaller grades in terms of the enrollments of students. So in terms of this level funding or even reducing some positions, that most likely is going to translate into a higher student-to-teacher ratio in the classes if you're losing a small grade and you end up with more kids coming in the front end. So I ask you to consider that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please step up.
My name is Sarah Walper, and I live at five forty-four Middle Road in Portsmouth, and I have a child at Don Darrow. I wanted to thank you, Mayor Farino, and the council for giving us the opportunity to speak. And just very, very quickly, I wanted to reiterate that the perception that there are cuts that can be made, I think we've all proven tonight that that's not the case, and just making a plea that we need to pass this budget and the recommended amount to avoid greater costs in the future. And those costs can be found either in real estate, which I think people have spoken to very well, to the general vitality of our community, and to the citizens we are raising into later problems that the police and fire department might have to face. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Bob Pollitt. I live at two ninety-four Marcy Street in Portsmouth. I want you to know that my remarks are not to be interpreted as being critical of you, but to challenge you. You have an opportunity to make changes that will have a long-term effect versus a Band-Aid approach, which I, in my opinion, some of the things I've looked at the budget are Band-Aid approaches. I have sat in the position of fire chiefs, police chiefs. I've owned a business, and I've looked at a lot of budgets. And I know what happens in your department, whether it's the police chief, fire department, education department. Everybody makes a very strong case why they're very, very important, and why it's the most important thing the city can have. This is a challenge you have to try to make sure that you're getting your dollars' worth from these various departments. I'm not here to run the police department, the fire department, or the school department or anything else, but I challenge you to make sure that you know, because we are in a financial crisis. I'm older than all of you. I grew up with parents in a depression and so forth. And whether I'm right or wrong, I don't know, but I think in my lifetime, the stock market will not go back up to fourteen thousand. And that doesn't mean that the world comes to an end, but it does mean that things are different today than they were twenty years ago. In nineteen seventies, in nineteen eighties, and nineties, things were going, growing, and so forth. And what happened during that period is we gave away a lot of things. And I say "we," I mean corporations all over the country. General Motors is a classic example of how they gave medical, retirement, all these things away, and now they're broke. And one of the major reasons, other than being poor managers, is that they gave away, and they've got some very, very serious problems. I think the city potentially has some great problems in terms of retirement and medical. As I understand the numbers, as I looked at them, is that the employees are contributing about less than twenty percent, somewhere around fifteen, sixteen percent, eighteen percent. I think that that's inadequate personally, but that is a decision you have to make. I understand benefits go along with salary and so forth and so on, and it all has to be weighed. But this is where you have an opportunity to make changes. You've got negotiations with a lot of unions coming up and so forth. You've allocated over a million dollars to cover it. If you don't hold firm and you don't give in, this budget is meaningless because the unions are going to dictate as to what you're going to do. So I urge you to take that position, and I say to you this, that...I ask you...I understand from looking at the things I've seen in the newspaper that the fire chief is the highest-paid employee in the city. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected, but he's surely one of the highest-paid employees in the city. And I ask you, is the fire chief the most important person in the city? I don't think so. I think he's very capable. I think he's probably very nice. I've never met him, but I don't think he's the most important person, that he should be the highest-paid person. Very difficult for you to sit there and say, "Oh, we don't want to do this because, you know, I'm not going to get votes, and, you know, the firemen aren't going to like me, and the policemen aren't going to like me." But you have a tough decision to make. I will say one other thing in regards to the police. I think that you have to...there goes an awful lot of overtime given out, and the argument is, well, they pay for it, whoever receives it. Yeah, they pay for it, but what happens is that their pension increases, and there's no money in there that pays for their pension. People live a lot longer today than they did twenty years ago, so what you're really doing is building a bigger and bigger obligation to the taxpayer. And I challenge you to address some of these issues. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, let me just correct the record. The chief, although he would like to be the highest-paid, isn't quite there yet.
Okay, okay. I stand corrected, but he is well-paid.
Okay. Please step forward. We're still in the first round.
Hi. My name is Julia Buck. I live at three ninety-eight Lincoln Avenue in Portsmouth, and I have two children in the school system. And I'm just here again. I feel like it was, I think it was maybe six years ago, I came in front of maybe a different council, definitely a different mayor, and said, "Whatever it takes to keep the schools going, whatever it takes to keep quality education for our town, read my lips, raise my taxes." And if that is still the case, then I still say the same thing. Our kids are important to us. The schools provide services to kids at all levels, and anybody who has children or who has had children knows that a school has to provide for the low performers, the middle performers, and the high performers. And what I'm seeing right now in the schools is a lot of the kids in the middle are being overlooked because there just are not enough people, and not enough...not enough people, really, to help those kids on an individual basis. And I think it's really important that we continue to serve those students, and they are our future. The other budgets, I would have to wonder about the overtime again. I think that that's a little questionable. I don't know any teacher who does receive overtime, but I know teachers who work overtime every day, every week, for as many days as possible. And I think that we need to support our schools, so I hope that you decide to support our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Still in the first round. Please, most welcome to speak. Come on and offer your comments. If not, I'll close the first round and call the second and ask people to rise and speak. For, against, simply to, the budget, in any way that they wish. I'll wait in case people are still thinking they may have more to say or want to say something. Well, I'm going to close the second round, and now I get to round three. Last chance. Everyone's welcome to come up, speak again if you've already spoken and wish to say something additional. Going to call the third round? No one else? And I can't tell if people are leaving or coming forward. I think they're leaving. So what we're going to do is we're going to suspend... We thank you, first of all, for your...
Recession.
It'll be a recess until the next public hearing. That doesn't mean a recess for this evening. And we thank you very much for your thoughtful words regarding the entire budget. It has been helpful for the city council to hear that as we embark on the next leg of the process. Please stay involved, and we certainly welcome you again at the next public hearing. Thanks very much, and we'll end this evening's meeting now.